...the best way to do it.
And is Bob gonna come too next Wednesday or something?
Did you like the design?
I don't know, I haven't even asked.
Did you like the design? Yeah. You did?
Alright. It'll weigh down now more.
Okay.
And now let me do this something. It's for twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just gotta go ahead and nail it.
Okay, I have to go to the stage four.
To the Republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's right. Good morning, thank you for allowing us another day and to be with this board if they make decisions. You best have your kids by them, Captain, in your name we pray.
We're going on the agenda, rule with agenda. Motion approved. I have a motion on the floor in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We do the discussion of deliberations relating to the director's contract and options regarding the same. I'm going to call on Chris McCarty, counsel.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I turn this just a little bit? Like I'm asking about that we have to address the board. Is this on?
I don't think so.
I got it.
Hello?
It is.
Is that, is that on?
No.
Well, thanks for asking.
It should be on, but it's pulled up there.
Sorry, it's off. I didn't look at you when I said that. Can anybody hear this now?
It's still not on.
It's still on?
You have to hit a switch, I think.
Is it on now?
Yes.
I can't work a microphone, this is going great. Alright. Just a little review. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. My name is Chris McCarty, obviously here tonight, some people in the audience don't know that. I am the school system council, board council for Loudoun County Schools, I've been for a while. Um, at the last board meeting, is my understanding, was not present, but the, the board order via vote, a majority vote, was seven to three for me as board council to negotiate a buyout on behalf of the school system with the current director of schools, uh, Dr. Jason Vance. Um, I take that order seriously. Obviously, we are, we are quickly approaching the school year, um, starting the school year, getting off with students back in school sometime next month as well. With that order that I got from the school system and knowing that the calendar is something that's important and knowing that time is of the essence, um, we scheduled a mediation to try to negotiate that in a much quicker fashion. But before I go into the mediation, what I want to do is just review really quick for the board members and also for the community. Sort of this, when, when the buyout concept is mentioned, what does that actually mean? To understand it, I think you have to understand Dr. Vance's entire contract. Dr. Vance had a four-year contract with Loudoun County Board of Education. He had already completed one year, which would have completely, basically been completed just now, this year. Uh, so he had three full years remaining on that contract. If we look at that, the value of his entire salary plus benefits over the remainder of the director of schools' contract would be roughly five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Again, that is salary plus benefits, his base salary this year would have been somewhere around one thirty-four. Um, the other thing that, that doesn't play into that, the reason I'm saying about, and there is a little play there, I definitely know the numbers. What the board has to understand, what the public has to understand is, under Dr. Vance's contract, a salary raise is essentially written into the contract of certain metrics for kids. So we have to assume that might have been part of it as well, so we have to assume there may be a higher number there as well. Um, Dr. Vance at the time, as of today, also has two hundred and eighty point five days of accrued leave, which is a lot, obviously would have some value. And, and something that's also important, when we talk about the concept of a buyout, that, the way I took it, means negotiate a possible buyout with Dr. Vance to where he is no longer not just the director of schools, but no longer an employee of Loudoun County School System. Why is that important? Because if you look at Dr. Vance's contract, which is a lot of directors of schools, if a director of schools comes up in a system in which they become director, which Dr. Vance did as a teacher first, then they a lot of times obtain tenure as a teacher. Dr. Vance did obtain tenure, and tenure is written into his contract. What does that mean? That means although the length of the director of schools' contract was three years, even if Dr. Vance would have been non-renewed after three years by this board, he would have still retained the rights to, to maintain and be a tenured teacher in this school system, basically in perpetuity. Because people always say, what is tenure? Tenure is basically just a contract in perpetuity, it's a never-ending contract, unless somebody retires, quits, or is terminated. So when we look at that, we don't just value that five twenty-eight of three years, we also have to say, if Dr. Vance is going to be bought out, what is the value of his remaining tenure rights beyond the contract rights past that three years as well? And if Dr. Vance was a teacher this year in this school system, just as a teacher, his base salary would have been over sixty, sixty thousand dollars. So beyond those three years, you have to take those things, those things into account as well. Um, so if we look at that and we break it down, just again, looking at the director's contract and the value of it, salary plus benefits, essentially, Dr. Vance over the next three years, in terms of a cost to the school board, would be fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars a month. Again, that's a rough number, but it's pretty darned close. But it's not accounting for the fact that he might have gotten other raises. Alright, so on July ninth, as I was instructed by the board to negotiate, we held a mediation in Knoxville in which mediation was attended by certain representatives. Me as board council, Bobby Johnson, Jr. was there on behalf of the board. Um, no other members of the board attended this. Deborah Coy was a representative of the Tennessee Risk Management Trust. Quick background on that, the Tennessee Risk Management Trust is the insurance carrier for Loudoun County Schools. Uh, because of the fact that this could turn into litigation if things were to go bad, the insurance carrier is always notified, and they wanted to be part of that negotiation as well, they were with us the entire day in the room in which mediation occurred. Uh, with her that day, she also brought an attorney, Mr. Carl Spinning, uh, was there basically to advise the trust as their counsel. Not to give an entire background on mediation, but mediation, the, the parties are not in the same room. Okay, so in the room with us that day on behalf of the board was me, Mr. Johnson, Ms. Coy as the insurance carrier representative, and Mr. Spinning as her attorney. In the other room, there would have been Dr. Vance, his wife Amanda, and their attorney, Mr. Chad Hatmaker. Just want to make that clear, Mr. Hatmaker's been Dr. Vance's attorney for quite a while, as far as I know, certainly just during this entire process. Then we had a mediator, Adrian Anderson. Adrian Anderson is an attorney with quite a bit of experience, um, in employment law, in construction, and other areas of commercial matters involving contracts. She's very well-regarded attorney, and the only thing the mediator does is act as an advisor, but a third-party dealer. They're there to go back and forth and try to get a resolution to some sort of a dispute or a possible dispute, which is what we had. So Ms. Anderson was going back and forth all day in between those two rooms and trying to see if a deal could be made. It was hard bargaining, um, and everybody there understood, and I want to make this clear, that we could not reach a formal deal that day. That has not happened. As I stand here right now, there has been no deal that has finalized with Dr. Vance. It can't happen because before that happens, the Board of Education in a public meeting like this one would have to consider it, and you have in front of you, and I'll go through in a second, the mediation agreement, would have to consider it, discuss it, and vote on whether to approve it. That is actually in the mediation agreement, that the agreement itself is tentative and contingent upon board approval. So there has been some rumors, I understand, that this is a done deal, that's absolutely not true. If you look at the document itself, it makes that very clear. Okay, everybody there that day at mediation understood it's a contingent deal if we make a deal. After about ten hours of negotiations, uh, going back and forth and competing, hammering things out, and talking about very difficult subject matters, um, a deal was essentially tentatively reached, and I want to go through with that. Again, contingent upon what the board does tonight. The board says no deal, there is no deal. The board says deal, there's a deal. It's that simple. It would have to be a majority voting. So what does it basically say? It's in front of all the board members, it will be attached, if it is approved, certainly, even if it's not, it's been presented to the board, it is a matter of public record. And if it's approved tonight, it will go to be attached, I would suggest the board make it attached to the actual board minutes. Okay? But essentially, that mediation agreement, the contingent one says, um, if approved tonight, Dr. Vance within the next month would receive a fifty thousand dollar, one-time payment, not from Loudoun County Schools. That is a payment entirely from the trust. The trust is, is a separate insurance company, that's not coming from the school system at all. But the reason the trust wanted to do that was because when they look at possible claims that Dr. Vance might have outside of a contract argument, I'm, I'm not going to go into all those, but even claims outside of that, the trust thought there was enough risk here that where they're going to put fifty thousand dollars of their own money into this to try to resolve this matter. What does it also call for? If approved, if approved, the board over the next three years would pay Dr. Vance per month, ten thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars a month, which roughly saves the Board of Education four thousand dollars a month over thirty-six months. Again, because we're not accounting for benefits, all those will be lost, and if it is approved, Dr. Vance, as of tomorrow, will resign effectively not only as director of schools, but as an employee of Loudoun County Schools. I need to make this clear, because when you hear this resolution, you are not making a finding as to any legal cause or anything like that. In fact, neither Dr. Vance nor the board would be making a determination or making a statement that cause existed to terminate Dr. Vance's informal contract if the settlement is reached. It would just be everyone agreeing to go their separate ways and just move on with life. The terms outlined in the bulk of this proposed settlement, I just outlined them, talked about the cost to the board, there's other terms. I've sent the board a confidential memorandum outlining my legal advice as counsel, which I certainly am allowed to do, you understand those thoughts. I will answer any questions the board has. I want to end with one thing before we do that, though. I, I want to say that approving this deal, in my opinion, as board council, has a great benefit beyond the cost savings I've already outlined. More than anything, agreeing to this deal simply allows everyone in this room, in this school system, on this board, and Dr. Vance as well, to just move on with life. This has been a difficult situation for all involved, I don't think I'm certainly, uh, going over any, any bounds or stretching at all to say that. It's been, it's been terrible to watch, and I, I feel sorry for everyone involved. Okay, it's, it's not fun. If anybody says it is, I don't know what planet, I'll put it that way. But lawsuits are expensive, lawsuits are messy, and lawsuits are very, very distracting. And at the end of the day, it's my understanding and it's my opinion as board council, that the primary goal of this board is to educate children. And it's to, to take care of the children, the teachers, and the other volunteers, and other members of this community, and this will allow you to do that today. If you do not approve this, and you ask me what happens next, I'll answer it, but the, the answer, quite frankly, is we don't know. And if the lawsuit is filed, no matter who wins at the end or who doesn't, it will not be a pleasant situation for anyone. I can absolutely get each of you in the aisle and tell you that's a fact. I've been through a lot of lawsuits, hundreds, and they're not fun for the parties. Lawyers like them, because we're weird, but parties don't. Any questions the board has?
I think the biggest thing that, when I was sitting up there, we went through this for over, over twelve hours.
Yeah, between ten and twelve, yeah, it was a long time.
We sit there and we went through, and the, the tenure thing, which, I don't plan a tenure where I work yet, so I work not in the education world, the other side. That's a huge thing, right there, even with the mediator, that was huge. Because he's got ten years of retirement, and it, no raise, it's sixty-four thousand dollars, that's six hundred and forty thousand dollars that plays into that, and that weighed heavy on, as she was mediating that. So this whole thing right here, not only just the contract, but with that, that was huge, that's a big part in this.
And Mr. Johnson, I, I, I don't want to interrupt you, I just want to make sure everybody's clear. What you're saying is, is she was talking about six hundred and forty thousand dollars at least beyond the three years of the director's contract, which would be exposure to the school system in any sort of breach of contract action. Five twenty-eight for the director's contract, plus an additional six hundred and forty thousand dollars for any sort of tenure that's lost by improper action. I'll let you know that. So I just want to make sure you understood, everybody understood, thank you, sir.
Also, sitting in that room, the, the question I had, sitting there with risk management and mediator, we're talking, we're all sitting, because you have plenty of time, those twelve hours to sit there and talk about a lot of stuff. Is there just cause to get, they, risk management didn't feel comfortable enough to have just cause. They didn't. Uh, that's the reason why we're parting ways, there was, they saw that with other stuff that could come down the pipe, that the fifty thousand dollars that she was able to give us with this was the best way to go. Buyout is the best way to go. This is the cheapest route for us. If, uh, want Jason gone, this is the cheapest. We go to court, half to three years, you're looking a million to million and a half after it's all said and done. And that's gonna, that'll kill our school system. That'll kill us. So went up there and listened to all that going on, tried to make the best decision, this is the cheapest way to do this. Well, you, it don't matter if you like him, not like him, looking out for the school system, this is the cheapest way to go.
Mr. Johnson, is that the form of the motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the mediation agreement.
I will say. We have a motion on the floor in a second, any more discussion on the issue?
I think, uh, there's a couple of things in here that, uh, that really caught me by surprise.
Sure.
Outside of the monetary value of, of the agreement, uh, Dr. Vance's, there's a request for a letter of recommendation that he's asking for to be made by the chairman of the board.
Right.
And he's also asking for his personnel file to be wiped clean.
Not wiped clean, the, the one letter of reprimand will be removed.
Well.
Which I can tell you is not uncommon in situations where someone leaves the school system. In fact, you'll probably see some situ, many situations I've dealt with in the past where if someone is effectively leaving for good, the personnel file at that point for Loudoun County Schools purposes has no purpose, so it is not an uncommon matter. But you're right, that isn't it.
Well, and I think with, with the investigation that we just had, and even your firm bringing back recommendations for this reprimand to be put in his file, and the board agreeing to that, and I think at this time with this agreement, we're saying that that's no avoid, and we're just happy to pay him and let him go without any kind of reprimand whatsoever.
Respectfully, I don't think you're saying it's no avoid. I think you're saying everyone's parting ways, everyone's going their separate ways, and therefore, their, that letter serves no future purpose for the Loudoun County School System. And if that absolves the school system of any sort of liability, it eliminates risk, which it does, and allows everyone to move on with their lives, that's why I'm recommending it. I'm not telling you this is the easiest thing in the world. I'll say this about mediation, and you're going to hear anybody that's ever been it say the same thing. If any party leaves mediation happy, then no deal was made. That's a fact. When you come to a resolution, there is no such resolution, there is no such compromise where everyone is happy with the deal. I can guarantee you that day, Dr. Vance and his council left a little unhappy with things, and I can guarantee you that day, I left a little unhappy with things, because there's no such thing as a compromise that doesn't require a little bend, no doubt about it. But those are absolutely your terms. Hey, go, I want to, oh, I forgot to address the, the, uh, letter of recommendation. That would be a letter that would have to be agreed upon, and it would essentially, in my opinion, it has to be a letter that talks about anything positive that Dr. Vance would have accomplished during his time. It would, there's, under no circumstances whatsoever would the school system, the chair, anybody from the board be asked to lie or bend the truth in any way, in fact, that won't happen. But there are a lot of metrics and other things I think the school system could point to that were under Dr. Vance's watch, that, that could be put in a letter of recommendation that would in no way, shape, or form be anything but factual. And that's the kind of stuff that would be in there. Any more discussion?
I'd like to make a couple of comments if I, I'd like to make a few comments if I could. I've been on the board now eleven years. I've been in education for fifty years. I don't know of a more difficult decision that I've had to make than this one relative to Dr. Vance, both in the motion, uh, a few weeks ago that I voted against, as well as, uh, this vote tonight. I've had many sleepless nights since that particular time over this, and as most of you know already from earlier votes, I, I've tended to support Dr. Vance, uh, wholeheartedly. I disagree totally with the particular incident that happened, and I, I've told him face to face that he was wrong relative to that. But in my mind, it was not, uh, it wasn't a capital offense and then didn't deserve death in that sense from the school system. It was a relatively, not, not a minor, it was a, it was a major factor. As I've talked to friends of mine, uh, and, and people at the north end of the county, uh, it's a totally different atmosphere there than, than here in the Loudoun area. Uh, there are, most people up there don't know what this is all about. And, and, uh, when they've asked what's going to happen to Dr. Vance, and I suggest, you know, he'll get a job somewhere else, well, well, he's been a good man, why are we, why are we losing him? They don't comprehend what's going on. When they've asked, what's this going to cost, and I've given them a tentative number, not sure where it was going to come out at that particular point, they think that's absolutely ridiculous, that, that we would spend that much money trying to resolve this kind of an issue as opposed to keeping Dr. Vance. I realize most of you here, and I don't feel that way, and, and I understand that, and I, I recognize, you know, your position on it. But at the same time, I, I personally feel, in the best interest of the children of Loudoun County, while you can look at the one side of it and say, let's start over again, on the other hand, spending a half a million dollars to settle this, that's three, four pennies on the tax rate, that's three or four teachers each year that, that we're, we're not being able to hire, uh, because we don't have the money. And that's far more important to me, the education of our children than a squabble over a director. I'm going to vote against the issue when I have a chance to vote.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Rattings?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Mr. Moffett? Ms. Bridges?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
No.
Mr. Solomon?
Yes.
Motion carried. At this point, obviously, uh, understand that the motion carries, we'll follow up and do the necessary paperwork. As part of this deal, just so the board knows, and again, this, there's copies of this I will make available to the press and everyone else that we can do. As part of this, and it's very standard in these deals, when you do a mediation agreement, it's very kind of quick. We'll have to do a more formal exhaustive settlement agreement, all the same terms, there will be nothing that changes, we just have to put a few more, what I would call boilerplate contractual terms in there. But the material terms will not change in the least, it will be the exact same thing that was approved tonight, and only that. Um, the only other thing I would add, again, that those be made a part of the actual board minutes, because it does reflect the board's action. Do you have any further questions than me?
And you, so you honestly think this consent was made about?
Absolutely. Now, if you ask me the exact number, I think that's hard, I can tell you it's going to save you a whole lot of money, and a whole lot of hassle, and a whole lot of worry, and it's going to allow people in this school system, your teachers, your volunteers, and everyone else to move on with life, that's a fact. Without hesitation, I'll tell you that. But if you ask me, is it going to save you hundreds of thousands of dollars, easy, no question about it.
Can you talk about the, I have a number six, sir, just for that.
I apologize. Mom fought for not putting it in front of me. Oh, yes, absolutely. So the other thing that this does as of tomorrow, in fact, when the, if the effective date of the agreement, we put in there because it is contingent upon board approval, would be tomorrow. So as of tomorrow, the other thing that we're doing, and again, the concept here, but I'll, I'll flat out tell you, it was my idea and my recommendation that we do this. Paragraph six is non-disparagement. It basically says that this board and Dr. Vance move on with their lives. Don't disparage each other, allow everyone to just go on with life, go on with careers, go on with Loudoun County Schools running it the way you want to, let him move on, and just put an end to this. That's what it says. Now, there's just legal terms, but that's what it means. Non-disparagement. Yes, sir. And again, I'll take the credit, and, or the blame, that was my recommendation, because I think it's the right thing for this school system and for this board and for everyone involved. Thanks, Chris. Thank y'all. How's the time for recognition of visitors? I know there's a lot of you here that want to speak this evening, this afternoon. Set aside thirty minutes, you know my policy on that. I'll probably let you go as much as you can, but please be reasonable tonight.
I'm the voice of reason. Now I'm almost broken, Steve. Hi, I'm Lynn. I guess by now everybody knows me. Thank you all.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Garen, we're in your corner. Let's start over, clean slate, do it right. I'd like to say I'm thrilled to death that Scott McIntosh is running the high school. Now, I don't have to pray for, pay for private high school for Lily, she'll be out there with you here in a couple of years. The only question that I have is, I didn't really understand when you were talking, who is it that doesn't understand why we wanted Director Vance gone?
You want specific names?
No, no, I want, you kept saying north, and I'm thinking, are you talking about the great white north, or are you talking about?
I represent the fifth district.
You're talking about the fifth district doesn't understand.
Oh, they understand, they just don't.
They just don't agree, and they think, okay, alright.
Lynn, that is, and he's right on with that, because I, I didn't receive any phone calls from my area till two weeks ago. And it was totally different as down here.
It, it, it's not nearly as hot up there?
Yeah.
It's, it's not, because Loudoun City High School, they don't know Josh, I understand all that, but.
But I think that's what he's, I think that's what he's talking about.
Right, I was just wondering, you, you, you said where you were from, and then you said up north, and I just wanted to make sure that we were talking north of Loudoun.
I'm, I'm from Minnesota originally.
Which is why I asked, you know, we, we can't tell people your accent.
I haven't asked any of them, however.
I was going to say, we really don't care what they think up there, don't they? They make me go to school in the snow. Um, just thank you all for everything, I know it's been awful, I know it's been hard. You're not going to get rid of us quite as soon as you hope you can, we'll still be attending the meetings and, and still making sure everything's going good, but I just want to say I appreciate everybody that worked hard and was patient with us, patient with me. You know, things got a little heated, and, and we all start over here, too. Be nice and civil all the way around. That's all that stuff.
Thanks, Lynn. Ms. Rina?
My name is Candy Bright. There again, I thank you for, guys, for doing everything you did. I don't know Mr. Garen, don't know anything about you, good or bad, I am willing to give you a chance. We are for the kids, uh, I'm for the teachers. Uh, I'm not for central office getting big pay raises as they have been in the past. We will be watching things, and we will be making the board accountable for things. Uh, we talked to several commissioners, and they say when the school budget comes in, it's just all in a bundle, and then they just go the way you want. Uh, going back to the attorney's word of clearing Jason Vance's file, I think if that's going to be done, Josh's file needs to be cleaned, and several, uh, Jeremy Lorenz for one, uh, all the garbage that come up about him, that don't need to be in his file. If you're going to wipe Jason Vance's clean, then you need to wipe more clean. Uh, if we're going to do this right and start fresh, then it needs to be done right and start fresh. This man shouldn't come in here and have everybody on his head because of what's happened in the past. You know, this is a new slate, let's start it with a new slate. But Josh does not need to have anything in his file whatsoever if you're wiping the slate clean for Jason Vance. We're rid of the cancer, so let's get rid of the oil, the pigments, we're the cancer out.
Hi, you all know me. I just, I really want to thank you all. You all know my situation with my daughter-in-law, Ms. Garen, you know a lot about the situation, you really helped her. Thank you for putting Mr. McIntosh in as principal, I feel very comfortable with that. But from the bottom of my heart, seriously, thank you. That's really all I want to say, is thank you.
My name's Sissy Chapman. I have spoken a few times to the board before. I want to start like speakers previously. Thank you for doing what I feel is right, in my opinion. The correct action has been taken, expensive albeit, but it was a necessary thing for the children of Loudoun County. I don't really know how to put this. Y'all, we're speaking of the northern part of the county. I'm fifth district. It's to say that we don't care, we didn't hear as much about it because the complaints up there, particularly the high school, is because the Loudoun City school system stands alone. But it also has seventy-five to eighty percent of the people who attend Loudoun City High School live in the county because they didn't want to go to the county school system. They would have a lot fewer students in that school if the parents and the children wanted to come to a Loudoun County school. I know that for a fact. I know several children who have told me that. I talked to one today who be, who will be a freshman, he's scared to death. But he didn't want to come to Loudoun County school system because of the problems that some of us knew about, others heard about, some that I feel were proven, some that I put in the business I was in, I call just cause. But that's not my shot. I want to say I appreciate y'all. Again, you did what's right. But I need to clarify the fact that I'm from the north end of the county, I'm fifth district. Uh, we don't get a lot of information. We don't get a lot of information, you know, we still got that bridge that we fight over every year. And a lot of trickle up the hill for the Littlemore's comes from some of this that goes on at county commission meetings. A lot of people choose not to attend because a lot of people think that, oh, they're going to do it for me. I hope to see that change, I hope to see a lot more people coming to county commission meetings, school board meetings, and if need be, Loudoun City council meetings. I made the newspaper for doing that, I'm not from Littlemore City, it didn't have any business being at the Loudoun City commission meeting, and I was there several times, and I'll be there again. But I do, I know most of you, some of you better than others, I appreciate what you've done, but not for me. I have a grandson who's in Loudoun County school system. I appreciate what you've done for him, and I expect the schoolchildren of Loudoun County to get better treatment than what they have in the last few years. They don't deserve it. An adult can handle it, because an adult is supposed to be old enough to make decisions and know how to balance out and come to that decision or conclusion. A child has no choice, because being mine, they didn't deserve it. And I don't think there's anyone of you that can actually hear to say that they did. The kids know what's going on in the schools, particularly the high school, but from bringing back to the local schools, yeah, we're traveled, because there was a child who was involved in something. And it didn't hurt just that child or that panic, it hurt the school, it hurt the school system. Loudoun County is unique. Most of the time, they're either all with you, or they're all against you. This happened to be one of the situations where it involved a child, the parent wanted that child taken care of, and wanted the situation rectified. I don't know of anything that could be done to help that child, other than the school board to be paying for the psychologist or psychiatrist, the child probably had to see for years. It wasn't right, it shouldn't have happened. Y'all shouldn't have let it happen. I don't like finger pointing, because I've had enough of it done at me in the past, but y'all should not have let it happen.
Ms. Chapman, you've got in six minutes, now I'm going to ask you to please...
I had a feeling you would come to that, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Gingrich from Teleco Village, Loudoun County, and proud to be a Tennessean. Some of you I know, because we've been working on the same side, some of you don't know me, and what you know might come from the biggest gossip in Loudoun County's website. You're welcome to get to know me yourselves. I made some comments at commission this week that applied to the school district, and I'm going to share them, plus a few other comments. The county budget process this year was an example of bad government purposely hiding the truth from its citizens. The new budget takes away education funding at a time when the Loudoun County school district is in crisis, and teachers won't even get a percentage pay increase, including some teachers who will not receive a step raise either. It took angry parents and other concerned citizens, including some of us in the village, to finally address a terrible situation allowed to continue for years because of elected officials who were either ignorant of or turned a blind eye to all the problems. Who is appointed the next director of schools matters a great deal. If the current director was the most qualified of the candidates, I can't even imagine what the other candidates were like. We need someone who is highly qualified and genuinely acting in the best interest of students, teachers, and especially county taxpayers. The public needs a say in the selection process, because based on past performance, many of us aren't very trusted of any elected politicians. Operations of the school district and school board need to be more open and transparent. They didn't know up north, no wonder, you know, not a lot of information is shared. There doesn't seem to be much real deliberation in decisions or opportunities for public involvement. Apparently, some elected officials in Loudoun County, and maybe on the school board, believe their accountability to taxpayers and county citizens ends once they are elected to office. I and others in Teleco Village and Loudoun County want better, more open government that is responsible and responsive to taxpayers and all citizens of Loudoun County. We started a new group called Patriots Reborn, working together for better Loudoun County government, including leadership of the Loudoun County School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gingrich.
My name is Pandora Reson, county resident. I have mixed emotions over this. I hate to spend money on something we shouldn't have, we shouldn't have had to do. I can't believe that you couldn't find cause. I'm not an attorney, and I've done plenty of cause if you wanted it. So, no one was digging deep. Is Mr. Hatton making a money chance at number of your firm as well?
No, ma'am, not at all.
Okay. The letter recommendations of five million dollar gift to Mr. Vance, you know that, nobody would hire a director's schools without an outstanding letter recommendation. You're one of the biggest budget in the county, and the most precious resources of the county. So, by signing off on that, you gave him the future. Why would you give a man a future who wasn't good enough to serve you? But if you add up the sum of the payments for twenty-five years, at his current salary and benefits, you're at four point two five million. When you add in those increases, you're easy at five million. So, that was your pardon gift to him, a half a million, or close to half a million, plus that letter recommendation. I think he could have been redeemed. Now, I'm not a great, you know, redeem is a big word, but you know he tried, you know he screwed up, you know, all of us have tried to screw up various things in our lives, but literally, I think if you had added and got his agreement to add about four amendments to his contract, he could have worked out for us, at least through the final term of his contract. Pardon me, I've got a virus. Well, I know there's damage done, but you don't know what those four agreements would be, do you?
Wouldn't matter.
Nothing matters at all.
Well, again, you know, you could always fire the man, you're not going to give up your life to fire him, right? What are the, what are the, what are the... Number one...
Pandora, it directed...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just helping out.
Thank you, I don't mean to be...
That's right, I'm sorry. Number one, I would have, his problems seemed to be in hiring and firing people. I would have recommended that the board, he be given a simple majority for all hires and fires, all employee hires and fires.
If you remember, I tried that, and that was against your contract.
I know, but I'm saying, this would be an amendment, he would have to get...
It's against the law. You can't do that.
You can't hire and fire?
No, it's his job.
All right, so we have to back off that one. He would have to stop harassing his employees. He, I think, and I mean, this is, this is a big statement, but if it was purported that he took a videotape in an effort to conceal it, and that's a class C film in this state, now that's a big charge.
Pandora, we can't get into discussion.
I know you can't, I know you can't. But he would have to be aware of the fact of the level of severity of what that alleged occurrence was.
I'm certain when they went to mediation, that everything was on the table.
I don't know, I don't know.
We were there for twelve hours, I can tell you, we went over about everything you can imagine.
Did you go there? Okay, I'm glad to hear that.
Everything you can imagine, we went over.
But right now, we are going to be paying him to do nothing for our schools, quite a bit of money, and if we backfill his position, now we're writing another big check for somebody that I think is needless to do. So, we're paying for two people to fill one job when we had a man who filled the job with flaws, but I do think he could be redeemed. So, again, it's with mixed emotions, but you've made a vote. I also, I don't understand why your vote was taken before any public comment was made. We had no chance to influence your vote. So, I have to disagree with that. Thank you.
Thanks, Pandora.
Thanks, please. But I'll say that vote's been in for about six months.
Join once. I'm sorry, you came up, too short to see it, Ted, I'm sorry.
I'll try the broom.
No, I'm...
My name is Pandora, and I'd like to thank you. I think it was a very hard decision for you to make, it was a very costly decision to make, but I think it's time to move on. In all fairness to Mr. Vance, he did do some good things, but the bad things overshadowed the good, and that's the sad commentary about the whole situation. In 2011, I'm one of the few people that was there in 2011, but I had a lot of misgivings about a contract, and everything that I thought came to fruition. I was against the tenure, I was against the transfer clause being taken out of the contract. I think that the contract in 2011 set the base for the biggest giveaway that this county has ever given, and that's money that should have gone to the children, not a director. I was greatly disappointed that no one from the school board, central personnel, attended the budget hearing or the budget meeting. While you were distracted, county commission reassigned six pennies from the education debt service, three pennies to go build a courthouse annex, and three pennies for the sheriff's department. I realize they can reassign those pennies, but in my mind, those were pennies that belonged to the school. Those are pennies that should be used for education, whether it was for future building facilities. Nobody advocated for, except for me, about the pay raises that the teachers did not receive. They did not receive the percentage, some are going to receive the step, others will not. Your non-certified did not receive a percentage pay raise, your nurses, the other staff. So, those were my disappointments about the budget process. This body was mute when it came to that, and I blame it on the big distraction. And I hope that we've learned a lesson, that in any future negotiations with contracts, we do not have four-year contracts, that we are very diligent about what we offer the next director, that we don't give away the farm, that we have transfer clauses, that we have no tenure, and things that should have been in this contract that would have protected the board and the school system. And I mentioned to a commissioner that Mr. Vance wrote his contract, and I said, and I was told, oh, no, I have all the paperwork, I have the emails, I have the video, and I have the newspaper article. So, I hope the next director does not write his own contract. Thank you very much.
I wanted to, and I'm not going to press anything about the high school tonight, but I do invite any, any of you, any of you, any of you, anytime you want to come out, I'll answer any questions you've got about the school business. I am excited that we're moving on in the school system. One thing I did want to talk about, about, I guess it was 2011, hey, you know, the day's better than I am, but I think in 2011, about the same time Jason came on, he brought Mike on as well. And fast forward to about June, I think it was second, June 2nd, 2019, a few weeks ago, I got a text that, you know, made my year, may have made my career, and I guarantee you, it saved our school system as it, as we see it now. Now, that may be a little bit melodramatic, but on June 2nd, I found out that Mike was not going to go to Nashville. That gave us the opportunity to have somebody to calm things down. That gentleman right there is a big reason for the success, and I don't want to undermine Jason at all, but that gentleman is one huge reason for the success of me, and the success of our schools, and the success of the people sitting on your left at this point, and the board's right. So, I want to just, you know, thank you all for what you've done, but also plug, you know, Mr. Garen as much as possible, because that sucker is good at what he does. And he's doing the job of two people now, and while, while that may seem like not a big deal from the outside, it's a massive deal. He's running crazy, but he's also, I will say this, for the past couple of months where I've been, you know, almost feeling like I'm drowning a little bit, I know he is, he's always there, every single time I call. So, I want to appreciate you in public, and hope that you guys will consider, when it comes down to it, do your due diligence, obviously, but consider, if he in fact wants to do it, consider him as our next, as our next director, and then hopefully build back the position that was there, so that we can go back to doing business like we should be doing it, like you all want, like you all want for our kids. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. Any other comments?
We just have one place to...
Go ahead.
I can do it from here. The last six school board meetings I had attended, I had brought up the same thing. And I am, in my umblest state of mind, requesting that the school board, if this gentleman's name is director, I unbelieve request that y'all work together to bring to fruition what you are supposed to be doing anyway. And I think Mr. McCarty over here might know forty-nine nine one thousand three, which again, says that y'all need an ethics committee. If that ethics committee had been in place, the chairman's supposed to appoint a member of the school board on that committee, and a citizen on that committee. Had we had an ethics committee in place, we might not have had the problems, as many problems as what we have been battling for the last six, eight months.
Very good, thank you. Somewhere else. Am I the most adjourned?
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
All right, aye.